Okay, so that's good to realize that, oh, it's not just rampant, but I am curious as to, well, where it falls, you know, racial epithets, religious overtones, how they're addressed, and then where do we see them, or is it possible, or is there a reason why they're not necessarily spelled out specifically as a person of color who serves a predominantly African-American congregation? I hear from parents and students saying, well, this is what's going on, and I'm surprised you're not saying or doing anything. And not that I'm now broaching the subject, so I can tell them, see, I said something, I did something, but to sincerely just hear what the administrative view is and the level of, I don't want to say tolerance, but the level of addressing these types of infractions are, and then depending then on your response, I may have a second question to follow.
I'd like to start. So as far as your first part of the question, where it would fall within the investigation, it could be under harassment, could be under language, could be under bullying, and so all, any of those pieces within that investigation happens. And the next part of your question is, I think was the next part, was what action is taken? Okay? They have in circles, that's one of the pieces that happened. Quite often, it's a suspension, and I can't say that every single time, I can't say nine out of 10. I feel like it's about nine out of 10 times, it's a suspension along with maybe restorative piece within it. As far as it being spelled out in here, remember, we use the der's piece within that, we have to go back through and look at comments to figure out what was the reason for it. But I would say, in a guess, that more often, more often of the language pieces in those are because of that word. I think the F-word is the other piece, where a teacher called that, or another student type of thing, but I would say this is, feels like when we get these calls, that's what it is. As a building administrator, when this happens in your building, you look at it immediately. It's not a thing you wait on until tomorrow. It's one of those pieces you look at now. And you're due diligence investigating, and with the kids of what took place, and then there's a teachable moment within that, whether it's teachable moment with us, or whether or not I have to bring in somebody else to help with that part of it, but it's, there's a piece that has to be in that. It's teachable, there's also can be a consequence with it. It's not taken lightly, does it happen? Absolutely, unfortunately, absolutely.
So then, like, I'm sorry.
Oh, and I was gonna say, I think the same could be said for not just racist language, but transphobic and homophobic language also. And that also, when we do a restorative circles, at least in my experience at Kellogg, and I think probably practiced widely across the district, a circle may be appropriate if both parties are willing, but in many cases, a student on the receiving end of some sort of hateful speech might not be interested in sitting down with another student. So during my time at Kellogg, sometimes a student maybe would write a letter, or they would try to find some other way to extend an apology, but we, you know, we don't force kids to sit down and talk with one another, especially with consideration for the victim's perspective.
And we might bring in another group that may have that conversation too, on that we've worked with, that's been actually very successful with some of our larger issues that come forward.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, of the instances where language is used, probably there are occasions when, because of that language, fights ensue.
Good point, yes.
And administrators, from what I have heard, have discretion and tend to assess, evaluate the causal components of the fight, what led up to, and I guess I would like to, can you perhaps share an example of how that is addressed, or how a principal or administrator moves in those types of situations? Because oftentimes, if it results in a out-of-school suspension, parents will be, you mean, my son, my daughter, they're being suspended because they got in a fight because somebody called them this or that, and, you know, so can you, okay, thank you.
Certainly, yeah, and that's actually a good point, I missed that one, that could be, could be a fight. So let's say that happens, and it turns into a fight, they aren't gonna label that as harassment, or language, or bullying, they're labeled as a fight, okay? Are there situations that a fight occurred because of that word being used? Absolutely. And in some of the situations, are both kids suspended? Absolutely not. Can I say that every time? No. But there are, that's part of that discretion piece that is brought in, and part of that conversation that the administrator has to do with investigating, and that's where their team comes into play, that's where witnesses come into play, that's where past situations have come into play with the student or students that have come before, or our office that we work with. But there are times, and I'm not gonna give it a specific example because it might out of school that way, but there are, there are times in the last, since April, that I can say at least three to five that happened that were not suspended, always, because of this situation.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, Director Whitehorn, thank you, and I appreciate you sharing your personal experience, your family's experience, which is terrible. I just wanna commit for us to come back to this. This is, this is a huge issue. After we had the N-word appear on the bridge near Century, I had a lot of conversations with staff and kids about this. My experience, which is much more remote than Chris's, which is not directly in schools, was that, and I heard there's some kids too, when a white kid is using that term, the consequences, if an administrator hears it and can verify it, are usually acted upon. We do have a phenomenon, and I had many students of color talk to me about this, saying that word to each other, which is a complex phenomenon for some of our administrators. That's not what you were experiencing, it's something. And then I do wanna not shift the focus from what you're talking about, but I think it's incumbent upon me to say, there have been a few instances in the four years since I've been in Rochester where staff used that word. They used that word in every instance, quoting a song, a liter, piece of literature, or a student, and in every instance, I took disciplinary action and made very clear that that is not an acceptable term to use in Rochester Public Schools, ever, as a staff member and as an educator. And in multiple instances, those staff were shocked that it was inappropriate to use it, which shocked me. But I, that's not the story you're saying, but it's related, and the kids take a lot from the adults. And so even though we're in the dead of summer and it's July, I don't wanna let the subject go by without saying, that term is never appropriate in a Rochester Public Schools facility in any context, even if you're quoting a work of great literature by black author in our district at this time. There are ways to teach that content without needing to have kids hear that term coming from a person in authority.
Director Whitehorn.
All right, y'all ready? I had a couple things. Okay, so I'd be remiss if I didn't say anything, because my passion is really in the disruption of school to prison. So I looked at this data, I looked at it a couple times, and there's some things that are bothering me just a little bit, and I'm just, and if nobody responds, it's fine, I just wanna get it off my own chest. So when we look at these numbers, and we look at the decrease of the infractions that have gone down, and I know we maybe glanced over this suspension rate chart, but there were some things that bothered me. One, if the amount of infractions are going down, how is the number of kids that are black and Latino went up on that chart? And I mean, we're talking small numbers, so we're talking small percentages, but if the numbers declined, but yet the number of kids of color increased, this is a problem for me, and here's where I'm going. I'm struggling with disciplinary things with the schools, because I, as a parent, as a community advocate, I believe in rules. Rules are, rules are necessary, they're needed, discipline is necessary and is needed. Where I am struggling is with this discretion piece. When we have such a gap of inequity with our disciplinary issues, my concern is, is the discretion ever going to be used appropriately? So if we have granted discretion, and I'm looking at this number go up, I'd be willing to bet a nickel that it'll go up again by another percent, because that's the trend that we're seeing. We're seeing that the discipline numbers went down, but we see that it went up two percent with black students, and it went up one percent, and then went up to another percent with Latino students. So my concern, but it went down with white students, right? So we have less white students getting in trouble, but we still have more black and Latino students getting in trouble, even in this small demographic. So my question, or my concern is, are we even able to truly say at this table that we are able to use discretion appropriately? Because we have these, these gaps, these disparities, and they're not moving. And when they are moving, they're, they're tending to move in the wrong direction. And the reason why I struggle with this is I feel like some discretion is necessary in all issues when we're dealing with children, and I don't want to see kids being, having things placed on their records unnecessarily on either side. But I feel that if we are in a city, or we're in a school system where we are trying to lessen the gap, maybe in the short term, making it more clear what the disciplinary actions are, and sticking to that for every student, would be more effective than continuing to let people use discretion in a system that has not been fair disciplinary, right? Just based on the numbers. And I don't know how other people feel about this, and I don't know if that is a question per se, but it is just my thought when I look at these things. And what comes to mind, and don't quote me, because I don't remember what administration it was, I was a baby when this administration was around, but one of our federal administrations, at one point, we did not see a single increase in crime, but the number of incarcerated black and Hispanic men doubled. So I'm always concerned when I see these numbers increase, but I see incidents go down, because we are widening the gap of the inequity. And I'm concerned with it being fair for our students. So I don't know how to do this without being overbearing, but still allow space for there to be a degree of fairness. And I don't feel that this school district, or many school districts, are really in a place that our discretion is credible, if we are in a space where we still have a disparity.
I think I need to.
And restorative justice circles, I think, are more effective when we involve the community, because what that allows is the village aspect, and it allows these kids to be accountable to more than just our educators, and I will say that I know several individuals that participate, and when the, when the grassroots organizations are involved, we tend not to see the students come back with the issues.
Superintendent.
Thank you, Director Whitehorn. I think it's really important, especially since I, the first slide injected the point about discretion. Discretion is in the Level Two infractions, which are beyond the classroom, but not suspensions. We have very little discretion for suspension, and I agree with you, we need less of it. And so, where I'm actually in agreement, we've been heading there over the last several years. And so I want there to be crystal clarity on the criteria for suspension, and a very strong emphasis on creating spaces in which events do not happen that lead to suspension even being on the table, but when it happens, we, we don't want discretion. So I'm, and we were just meeting about this last week, we have some work to do there, but we have gotten a lot. So if my lack of clarity in discretion for an incident that is not something a teacher handles on their own in the classroom, that does not add to suspension, but when suspension is at play, I agree with you, I think it's very helpful to have board members making that point. We also are not saying to our administrators, and when I got to Rochester, I heard this frequently, can I suspend? I heard this, I don't know if I can suspend, can I suspend? And the district was coming out of a period that was very different. And, and this board, obviously, you are not yet on the board, we, we talked about it at the board level and talked about it, the answer was yes, but you need to be doing it with crystal clarity, unclear criteria, and we want our kids in school. So this has been a journey, I appreciate the urgency you attached to it, and I really wanna be clear about that, and as we were talking about this and planning this presentation, we do have some work to continue to tighten the criteria for suspension. There are different types of suspension and different ways to bring a kid back in, but that level of discretion that removes kids from learning for very different reasons is highly problematic. I would, I would agree with you on that point.
Director Cook.
This, this is, this is not gonna build off the discussion that we've had so far, but I did have some thoughts on, on the presentation here. Whenever we get around to this time of year, and we're talking about the Level Two referrals and so forth, I find this to be among the, the most humbling aspects of running a school district, certainly, I think the most sophisticated clinical aspect of managing a classroom is managing the behaviors in the classroom. I, I can't even get my head around how to begin on that. And the, the part that I, that I struggle with is what, what should the board be, I understand that it's important that we review this data, and that it is certainly relevant, but what would a good number of referrals be? Because certainly, we, we, we should have high expectations for our students, I think that's part of how we honor them, and we want to provide them with a environment that is conducive to learning, and that is safe for everyone. And we also, I know this board certainly puts students at the very center of every decision that we make, and we recognize that even the students that received a Level Two referral for whatever incident that occurred, they are this community's future as well, and we absolutely want them to, you know, recover from that incident, and thrive, and find their passions. But like, there's a whole lot of, and I think this is, to the extent I'm building off of anything, there is a whole lot of professional judgment and discretion in how to use these tools in order to bring about that productive learning environment that's safe for everyone. Is there such a thing as a best practice, like this number of referrals per enrollment, or, and obviously, you know, depending on the schools, the, what conditions create a Level Two referral at, the Phoenix Academy is, I'm sure, very different from Willow Creek and so on, but like, what, I don't know, I guess that's my first question. How should we be interpreting this data relative to a good environment for learning?
I can't say the number should be zero, because it's not gonna happen. I think I'm a good person, but I got a speeding ticket this week.
True conclusions.
I made a mistake, I got a speeding ticket. So people are gonna make mistakes. What I do think we need to look at is the chart you're looking at right now. Your numbers should be similar to what your demographics are. I think that's what the best practice piece should be. There isn't a number that if you've got 17,000 students, you should have 1,000 referrals, no. But it's more about where your demographics are in comparison to how many referrals you have. That's the piece, and so there's not the gap within that.
I think one thing I would add to is, and I agree with what you said, I mean, we don't, we don't ever expect 100% of our kids to be on grade level. It's a great, that's a great goal, but I don't know that that's realistic. I also don't think it's realistic that all of our kids will meet all of the behavior expectations all the time. I, but I do think that the idea with the CESE Behavior Specialist that we're bringing in is to look at what are the system-level things that we need to be doing differently, so that we're really clear about our expectations, and we're putting in systems in classrooms and in buildings, to help students make better decisions, or understand expectations more clearly, and also help teachers be equipped with how they might respond differently to correct behavior in the classroom, so it doesn't lead to excluding kids from the classroom. So I think the idea is, the, I think the seven and a half percent, like, if you ask me what the best practice is, I actually don't know that there's a really clear answer to that. I don't know that there's a target percentage. Actually, when we were talking about the number earlier, I got to thinking, like, what are all the other schools in, in the Big Nine? Like, what percentage do they look at, and how does this compare to other districts? Because we don't often compare our behavior data to other districts, because it's not apples to apples, but I think that there's always room for improvement, and I think that the way that we need, I think that we're happy that we've seen the decreases that we have, and I think we still have work to do at our system level, from the building level and from the classroom level, and that's just to put the support in place to help continuing to support the adults that are working with our students.
Superintendent.
I'll try and be brief, but I realize that a number of times, this CESE acronym has come up, and I saw a couple board members said, what is CESE? This actually is, I'm not just gonna take a second to explain the alphabet soup of it, but this is an important shift in how we're coming at this issue. Coordinated Early Intervention Services is a funding stream that many school districts have access to. It involves federal and state funding for special education services, and the basic idea is to avoid having kids identify as a disability, and you have to write a plan and get approved. Rochester Public Schools used to pay for our entire middle school Rite Fit with our CESE dollars. We paid for one whole program with those dollars. When we created, this board created, our Middle School ALC, we completely changed that, which I believe filled a huge gap in our district for alternative programming for middle school. We were also taking a relatively small, but not insignificant amount of money, and serving it essentially to run one program for a very limited number of kids. If your goal is to have the kind of systematic change that I think underlies Director Whitehorn's question, that is not gonna change the whole system. We were spending all of these dollars on one small program. We now have hired three, I was thrilled at the people we've gotten for this job, and you'll meet them when they start in August at some point. We've hired three people with professional and personal expertise in behavior systems. How do you teach in ways that lessen behavior, problematic behaviors in the classroom? How do you create positive systems within schools, and how do you deal with the mental health challenges? Those are the three experts that we're bringing in. They will be working with our school teams to put in place systems that address these issues. So it really is taking that, that, those dollars in a way that, if we do it right, which we're committed to do, is gonna leverage these big issues, whereas we were previously focusing them all on a program that really served, I think Middle School Rite Fit was about 40 kids when I got here. So that's the kind of shift from system thinking to like a targeted, like intervention for a limited number of kids. And it was a wonderful program, and of course, many of those people are now bringing our Middle School ALC to life, but it's a very different, different approach to how we're trying to come at these issues at the system level.
I'll let Director Cook finish.
Thank you. So the, and thank you for that, Superintendent. The other question I had actually is about the CESE thing, the new initiative, because last year, when we talked about this, we talked a little bit about what the next steps, or what's like the next level to get this work to, in furtherance of creating positive and productive learning environments. And we talked a lot about the emphasis on student belonging and on deeper learning, and how, you know, the theory of action, it seemed to me, my armchair role here, literally in an armchair, was that by better identifying, or better relating to students' identities and helping them to see themselves reflected in their curriculum, and, and, you know, be more involved, more engaged with their classroom studies, that that would have a tendency to lead to less disruptive behaviors. Is that, is that part of what has driven some of the changes? Is that still regarded as sort of the next steps, or is this a little bit of a pivot to, yeah?
Well, I would say going back to my example that I shared about Dakota, I feel like their investment in restorative practice, and not just with students, but their circle functionality within their staff, I think, has made a huge difference. I think the staff feel more connected, and that they belong more, and in turn, they're more invested in what's happening in their classroom, and kids feel more connected. So I think that, that doesn't, that doesn't go away. I mean, that continues to be a significant component of the work that we have to do, and I think that's true K-12 across the district, across the nation, that the more kids feel like they belong, and that they feel reflected in what's happening in their school, the more they would align with expectations for behavior and expectations for academics, and be more connected to the adults that can support them.
And that every school's different. Willow Creek took a very different approach, but also saw dramatic improvements. And Dakota has seen some very exciting improvements too, so that's where you are gonna have to meet the needs differently in those two schools, and that's been measured across these indicators. We chose this year not to highlight individual schools as much, we did that last year, I think I got some feedback, for reasons I reflected on a lot, and I understood, that in a board presentation, to highlight one individual school where we can't have a dialogue with them here, didn't tell a full story, so that's part of why we're not, like, digging deep. We certainly could schedule a discussion with the leader staff, and maybe students from some of these schools, if the board would like to dig in, for instance, to what's happening at Dakota, or some of those other sites. It was a little too comparative to do it, like, as we did, which was my idea, and I thought, well, let's, let's pivot a little bit more to look at the system, because it's not, they can't be here to tell that story, and we can't dig deep enough into each school to really do it justice.
And I would say, I'm using Dakota as an example, but there, I mean, we have buildings across the district that are doing great things in terms of how they create more, a greater sense of belonging and more safety for their students, and I think they do it through a variety of our different key initiatives, and some of that's restorative practice, some of that is deeper learning, creating that relevancy for kids. But Dakota was just the example, but we've got principals leading the charge on a lot of these things in their buildings, and doing really great work to make kids feel more connected.
Director Workman, did you have?
No, I'm good.
Director Whitehorn.
Just, just, I want to continue on with the CESE conversation. At the end of that, you did mention something about us being cited, but not.
Not cited, but a warning, basically, saying that there were some discrepancies in data, so they wanted to put it on our radar, basically, for us to be able to consider possible solutions before we got to a point where it was a kind of a red flag for the state, and so.
It's just out here.
Yeah, yes, and it, those were specifically the things, over-referral for students for special education evaluation at the middle school level, and then exclusionary discipline for students of color specifically, so exactly to the point that you, that you highlighted for us.
So, so I guess my, my big question is, if we are cited, what, what does put you at a red flag? I guess my, I guess, when you give me numbers, I wanna know, like, are we at a yellow light? Are, are we at the yellow, it's about to turn red? Like, do we have the opportunity to run this light? Or?
I think that's, I think that's part of the reason that they approved the.
I'm sorry, it's too early.
Too soon, too soon. I think the idea is, I would consider it maybe a yellow light, like, saying, hey, let's pay attention to what's happening right here, and I think that that was the reason that they were so appreciative of the CESE plan that Jill, Don, and Connie Grims were put together, to say, here's a way for us to be able to address both of these components, and it shows the state that we are serious about focusing on what those resolutions might be, and how we might do better for our students of color specifically, about exclusionary discipline, and making sure that we're only referring kids that actually have disabilities, and not that it's behavioral things happening within a building.
So did they give us a metric on when it becomes red, or is it just if it doesn't change?
No, no, just that they continue to monitor it, and they just want us to be aware that this was something that, that we should have on our radar.
And back to your earlier question, you know, we can celebrate that we had, our data's going down, but there's a pit in all of our stomachs that we've talked about, this slide right here.
Yeah.
So I hope you didn't feel like we glazed over it, because it's not something we're looking at, because it hasn't changed. And so we're still having to do that, so we have to, some ideas of, do we have to look at, at building-specific with how all those new numbers look, and go that deep in that direction within that for some of that pieces? So this is a very important piece to us, as far as, yes, things are going down, but here we are still.
And I just wanna say, I'm aware that it's just out-of-school suspension, but my thought is that the other ones probably are not too far off. I would assume that we're probably tracking similarly in other.
They're similarly distributed, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to.
Go ahead.
I think, too, the reason this conversation is so important is that, you know, we were focused on that, the issue that the state cited, we have been for the last several years. Our current strategic plan focused on Level Twos. The lesson here is that it suspensions both in-school, which is, the skip, the performance measures that this board approved last spring are in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension. That is gonna be one of the top six indicators for every school in the district. And we learned that the focus on Level Twos, the theory was. And we learned that the focus on Level Twos, the theory was kind of like what some people used to call the broken windows school of policing. If you are arresting people for broken windows, it will stop the murder rate. And in the criminal justice world, there's been a lot of analysis that said that was not solid science anyway. But the idea of Level Twos was if we focus on these Level Twos, suspensions will get better. We learned that's not necessarily the case. And that's why this learn, sanctions that remove kids from learning will be right up there with our reading scores, our grad rates, our post-secondary enrollment rates in this new system. And so we have a lot of work to do over the next year to build out the supports for that. But, but we weren't focused on this goal the last really three years like we will be going forward, thanks to the decision you made last spring to focus us. And you're absolutely right. Their in-school suspensions and out-of-school suspensions are co-equal in our new system. We, we focused on out-of-school today, but the in-school will be part of every presentation going forward.
It was because of OCR. Go back, way back when I had dark hair. It was OCR that we had with, with that part and that's why we focused on Level Two because that was part of that goal. And it just continued because the board wanted to compare apples to apples. And if we changed it, it wasn't going to be that way.
Director McLaughlin.
I just want to be clear for anyone who's looking at this, that Dr. Rock, you mentioned when you were presenting that you really wanted Slide 27 and 28 to be combined. And I completely missed what you were talking about when you said that, but now I understand it. That what we're talking about here is 27 is the data and 28 is the distribution of racial and ethnicity across the district as a current state.
That's correct.
If we can work on how to get that onto one slide for next year, that would be great. Because I think that that's, if you just look at 27, you don't understand the concept.
Yeah, you have to use both of these slides side by side.
Right. Right. And I'm worried that if people are.
Bars on there, it became so small, nobody was going to be able to read it.
Okay.
We can work on that.
If we can work on that, that would be helpful. The other question I have is that, I love the idea of the behavioral specialists and working on the behavioral systems and I'm excited to meet them. Can you tell us a little bit about their backgrounds? Are they educators? Are they something else? Are they a combination?
I haven't met two of the three, so maybe I'll give one of them I know well, but I looked at all of their VIDA and I was thrilled at, at, at who we got, so.
Right. So the person who will be focusing on the engagement is a person who has been working at Mayo Clinic as a behavior analyst, working specifically in adolescent medicine. And she has, she's a board certified behavior analyst. The person who's working on the mental health piece of this is somebody who's been working for over twenty years as a social worker in an area district and has been working with observations in classrooms and helping teachers and intervention teams try to identify like what are themes that they're seeing and how they help teachers enhance their practice when they're seeing a theme of mental health concerns. And then also worked at the building level, on a building leadership team, doing the same type of thing, but specifically at the middle school level. And then the last person is somebody in district who's been a great instructional leader, who has a reputation for outstanding relationships with kids along with excellent instructional practice. So I think the three of them together will be really dynamic and we're really excited to have, get them on board. We actually set the criteria for what we wanted for these candidates and Connie Grimsrud and Jill Dunn and I met with Mona and Jackie and we were like, well, this is, I mean, this is a high ask. These are high bars and we found candidates that exceeded our expectations for each of the three positions. So it's really exciting to see the expertise that we'll have on this team.
And so just to understand, they're going to have a little bit different roles because of their different backgrounds, but they'll be all working together on the same goal.
Exactly. And we're going to locate them in a middle school so that they are embedded in a school, but they will be able to start their work with all of our middle schools and then expand from there. If we see hotspots or if we're feeling like they have the capacity. We just felt like saying, here's the district was maybe too big to start. And so we'll start focusing at the middle school level based on the warnings that we received about our middle school referral rate.
Wonderful. Thank you.
So in all the years that we've been talking about this discipline data, I think we've talked multiple times about what data should we be looking at and what formats. And when I look at the out-of-school suspensions and every time we break the data down by race and ethnicity, that's all we know about these kids. All we know is, is what their race and ethnicity. So I wonder if going forward, as we think about the implementation of these new strategies, if there's a way to present information that tells us more about these kids that isn't just about their race and ethnicity. I think about the Perspectus Project and how it really had conversations with the kids who were affected by this kind of discipline. And we heard about the kids, but then we also heard about the interventions that were being applied. And I think that might help us to understand going forward if these are the right interventions to change the numbers. Because even if the numbers change, I'd want to know, what did you, what did you do that worked? And if the numbers don't change, why didn't what we tried didn't work? So that's just a, along the lines of Director McLaughlin's, get it all on one page. What else, what else can we know about these kids so that we understand how we're addressing their issues?
In terms of their statuses logged within the student information system, we can tell you anything about the demographics or program participation status. As, and I almost answered one of the earlier questions with this and then I held back because I figured I'd be talking too long. But any of the students that are on those biographs are generally going to be, have more than one category that might be associated with a risk of a behavior. Whether it's special education status, we've already talked about, or whether it's anything else. We reduce lunch rate status, students tend to get suspended at higher rates than the students who are not. That's true nationwide. I haven't looked at it here, but nationwide, that's true. So the, the multitude of things that could be happening in a student's life that even just quantitatively we can tell is a story to be told. And then like you said, like with the Perspectus Project, there's an individual story behind each one as well.
Anything else, board members?
I do have one question. I'm thinking about different ways to look at this information too, that, I'm looking at Slide 27. Is there a lot of variety of that based on the elementary, middle and high school? Or is it pretty much looking like that across the board?
Is 27 the one with the three graphs?
Yeah.
No, there's not much difference between level. It's all within, pretty close to each other. It's one of the reasons I didn't break it out that way.
That would be, that would be good to note for us too, just so that we're not thinking that, you know, it's significantly different at any of those levels.
Yeah, they're all pretty comparable in terms of the demographic distribution.
Director Cook.
Actually, so one other thought for whatever this is worth, I guess we'll find out. I, we've talked a little bit about the, the disparities in these, in this data relative to the district's population and, and how that might relate to the discretion of people who are deciding on what is a Level Two, what is an out-of-school suspension and so forth. I, I think that is absolutely an important area for the district to focus on. I'm also concerned to the extent that these consequences are symptoms of some unmet need of some of our students. And I think in most cases, that is probably a fair way to characterize these consequences. What does that say about our ability to meet the needs of our students across the racial identities, racial and ethnic identities of our student population? And so I, I, I don't know if I have a question or a, or a comment or whatever, but I just, I, I, from my perspective, the mission is to meet the needs of these students and to, to help them to participate in our school communities and help them to be, you know, productive learning environments. And the, the goal, I hope, is to meet their needs in a way where they're not exhibiting the behaviors that result in the consequence, right? Like getting one level ahead. And maybe that's part of where the CEASE work takes us. Maybe that's part of what the focus on belonging and identity and so forth eventually gets us to, but I just, yeah, this is, this is tough. I don't, I don't know that I, I have a conclusion. So anyway, that's, that's my perspective.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next item is a prep for action item, the Girls Hockey Cooperative. And we're scheduled to take action on this at the August 5th meeting. Superintendent Pecat.
Thank you very much. I want to recognize Dan Christopher, our Activities Director at Mayo High School is going to come up. And Dan is going to give board members an overview of a proposal. We know that we really, really value extracurricular activities in Rochester Public Schools. And sometimes the number of students who choose to participate in an activity creates a challenge for us in fielding a team. And in those instances, Minnesota State High School League rules do give us the opportunity to form cooperative agreements that combine schools onto teams. We are at that moment with girls hockey and so we're bringing you a proposal to create a co-op. I just want to say before I turn it over to Dan, that I have met over the last several years with parents and members of the girls hockey community. As Dan will describe, we did, and I did, investigate a co-op that stretches across all three of our high schools, Sentry, John Marshall and Mayo. For reasons I also understand, the conference of which we are a part, said that does not meet the criteria for a co-op. But I want the parents for whom that was the preferred solution to know, we really did pursue that. We also cannot be an athletic conference unto ourselves. And so for reasons I understand, our fellow members of the Big Nine Athletic Conference concluded that a co-op of our three high schools would not meet the criteria for a co-op, could be essentially anti-competitive. But we did investigate that authentically. And it's important for those folks and they're passionate about girls and hockey in our community. It's important for them to know that we really did explore that possibility. So now we're going to bring you a different recommendation. So Dan, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Okay, just starting with the numbers from last year. Last year we had sixteen players, three of them were goalies. We graduated six seniors. Anticipated numbers for this year, we'll have thirteen players, two of them being goalies. Minimally, we would need about eleven or twelve skaters, so we're at that low numbers. So we're at that kind of bare bones, so to speak, numbers to, to be able to participate. And when you get injuries, illnesses, unfortunately, sometimes violations, et cetera, you get to that point where you have to postpone a game and, and obviously we don't want to, to, to go down to that route. And we were at that point last year and unfortunate, fortunately, last year, we got to the point where we did not have to postpone any games. We, we had a successful season. We do have a brighter future coming forward with participation numbers. Eighth grade, I got five players coming up, seventh grade, eight to nine, sixth grade, six players, fifth grade, seven, eight players. So we got numbers coming through the, the pipeline. One of the, I, I guess fun parts of, of my position is evaluating our teams and our programs. And with our girls hockey program, we have a new coach, Marcel Black, that took over this last year. And I think really did a wonderful job. The culture has really changed with things and really inspired, they're really getting into the youth system. And I really think within this program, it's, it's moving upward. This team overachieved last year. As Superintendent alluded to, we did propose to the Big Nine Conference and our region as well, potential co-op between all three schools. There's currently a GM and a Sentry co-op. It was unanimously denied with, with us abstaining from that vote. The recommendation was for Mayo High School to co-op with the surrounding communities and continue to provide two programs in the city of Rochester. The co-op proposal for, for Mayo High School Girls Hockey, we like to form a co-op or partnership with the following schools, Dover Yoda and Lourdes High School. The addition of these two high schools would, would provide stability and participation numbers with rejected three to five players annually. So this would be with, with both those two schools. So we'd get probably three to five kids from both those schools each year, which would give us a healthy number of players to, to be able to play with. And hopefully not be able to, obviously be able to postpone those games and have a good varsity team. This was verbally accepted by both of, of those two ADs. They are excited for this potential partnership. Obviously, they would need school board approval as well yet. And then this would need, obviously, if this was approved, to go to the Big Nine and the region approvals as well. One thing that is being a lot more apparent across, co-ops now is sharing the cost with co-op, other co-ops. So kind of a cost broken down per student that I, I like to share is the coach's salary plus transportation, plus the officials, the casual workers, minus that revenue. So that revenue would be the gate, plus that sports fee, divide that by the number of, of participating. So in this case, I kind of took like approximately eighteen players, okay? So in this case, it would come out to, this would be an approximation, but this would be roughly about a thousand dollars, plus that $2.95, which is the, the two, the sport fee for, for girls hockey, okay? So the proposed financials for this, the co-op students would share the cost of running the sport. The fee would be assessed to Dover Yoda and Lourdes and it would be their decision whether to pass these costs, you know, down to that, that individual families. And they're aware of, of these proposed financials as well. All right. Thanks for your, your time and consideration. Questions?
Director Whitehorn.
Do you be splitting the $12.95 a student? Is that the number, you definitely gave us that number? That's what we split between the three schools?
No. So this would go toward, this would go back to the, the district. Yep. Yep.
And that would be the cost for each student participating in the co-op, whether they were from Rochester or from Dover Yoda or Lourdes?
So what, what would happen is, is that $2.95 would be, no matter what, that would be the, the sport fee that every student pays, right? That thousand dollars would be billed to, say, let's do over, so let's say Dover Yoda has three players. I would send a bill to Dover Yoda for $3,000. Okay? That $3,000 comes back and it goes to Rochester Public Schools. And that cost, or that, that money goes into our, our general fund that helps pay for like our transportation, our officials and everything that we pay for.
And then Dover Yoda or Lourdes can decide if they want to then charge their players for that thousand dollars?
Correct.
Director McLaughlin.
I'm curious, where are these students playing now, the Dover Yoda and the Lourdes? Do they have teams or?
They do not have a home.
So, but they have players? Is that what you're saying?
They do have players that have come up through the youth system and they do not, they do not currently have a home. Yep.
So would they be incoming freshmen then or how, how did they get integrated into?
Some of them just do not play right now. Or some of them would be incoming freshmen or they play just rec league stuff, but yes.
And that kind of relates to my question is that how, what's the competence level that they, they would join the team?
Pretty high.
Yeah. How, how did you assess that?
Well, how would I assess that? So I would assess that by their, their ADs has reached out to some of their community and said how many players would, would potentially play. And those players said, yes, we would, we would participate.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. This will be back for action in our next meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you just have?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm struggling with the math here. So on the second bullet point, under cost structure per student, it's $1,203 per student. But you're charging a thousand dollars?
Yeah. That was, that was the estimation. Yep. Yep.
So, I mean, will there be an exact amount once?
Yeah, yep, yep. That was, that's just kind of an estimation on kind of where, where it would lie.
So in the, in the agreement with the other two schools, is that number set ahead of time, that fee?
No.
And then?
No. So what, what it would be is I would, what. No. So what it would be is, I would, what it would end up being is, is I would put the coach's salary, transportation, once we find out what the actual numbers are, or number of players are, then I would give them, okay, this is what the actual fee number is.
So that, that number could be more than a thousand?
Could be higher, could be lower, yep, correct.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next prep for action item is the approval of the Long Term Facilities Maintenance Plan, and we are scheduled to take action on this item at a special session prior to our study session on July 22nd. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair Nathan. In part of my effort to find an obscure research study that I can connect to any subject.
[laughing]
Before I turn it over to John, I want to briefly highlight the findings of a working paper from the National Bureau of Economic Research that looked at the connections between investments in facilities paid for by bonding, of course, done by a bunch of economists, and home prices and test scores. So my, my eyes went way up. This is by someone at Yale, the Public Policy Institute of California, and the Institute for International Economic Studies in Stockholm. So what they found was spending on basic infrastructure, such as HVAC, which we're going to hear about tonight, spending on your heating and air, or on the removal of pollutants raises test scores but not housing prices. Conversely, spending on athletics facilities raises house prices but not test scores. Socioeconomically disadvantaged districts benefit more from capital outlays, even conditioning on project type and existing capital stock, how your buildings are. Our estimates suggest that closing the spending gap between high and low socio-economic districts and targeting spending towards high-impact projects may close as much as 25% of the observed achievement gap between high and low poverty school districts.
There you go.
A provocative paper that only I probably read, but it shows that what we do with our buildings really matters. And the Winston Churchill quote that I used at every one of our opening new schools my first year was, "We shape our buildings, and then our buildings shape us." So John and the team do a great job with keeping our facilities up to date, and the board needs to approve this plan before the end of the month. So I'll turn it over to John.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Pecquell and Chair Nathan. So at our very last school board meeting, you approved the '25-'26 school year budget, and we are here kicking off the start of the '26-'27 school year budget with the Long Term Facility Maintenance Plan. Because your approval of this plan then sets into motion the property tax levy for payable '20-'26, which then, of course, feeds into our next year budget. So, yeah, here we are. We're talking about the Long Term Facility Maintenance Plan. It's a 10-year plan that we update annually. I wanted to just briefly remind you that the LTFM, or Long Term Facility Maintenance, means these funds are not for new construction, they're not just for general remodeling, they're not for leasing space, they're doing energy efficiency projects. They're really to take care of the eroding assets that we already have and to restore them to like-new conditions. That's a phrase we use quite often, is this a like-for-like project? For example, if we were working in this room at the end of the day, this still needs to be a school board meeting room. When we go to work at Mayo High School, we are working on projects that are going to replace plumbing, heating, cooling, floors, do painting, ceilings, all that kind of, the roof, parking lots, all that kind of stuff. But at the very end of the day, it's going to be the same Mayo High School. It's going to be shaped the same, classroom layouts are going to be the same. This is not for changing the footprint of Mayo High School. It's for restoring it back to a like-new condition. If that were not the case, we would not have authority for it to use the funds. We would need to go to voter-approved referendum to do that, to construct a new school or to change it significantly. Funding for LTFM comes?
Are you thinking the slides?
No, I have nothing to present on a slide today.
Great, thanks. Just want to be sure.
Yep. LTFM comes from three funding sources. So we have the annual pay-as-you-go property tax levy. So those are, we generally reserve that for our smaller projects that are under $175,000. That's about $6.5 million annually. We have some state aid, just under a million dollars. That goes into the debt service fund to help pay property, or principal and interest costs that our property taxpayers would otherwise pay. And then recently, you just approved a bond sale of around $33 million, and that's funding the majority of the big projects that are happening in the summers of '25 and '26. One thing that we try very hard, one thing we try very hard to balance is the property tax rate along with keeping our buildings in good condition. So we have designed this plan to, on different years, go up and down based on the projects that are needed to be done, as well as trying to keep those property taxes as flat as possible. I just wanted to highlight, I put this in the background information, some of the big projects that are upcoming, not necessarily this summer or next summer, but they're within the 10-year plan, and they are projects of significance. It's just kind of interesting to share them with you, and so that we can be looking towards the future. But Century High School, for example, needs a new roof. That is going to be about a $7 million project. John Adams Middle School needs additional parking lot replacement. John Marshall, even though we spent a lot of money there over the last few years, now it's time to address the roof there as well. Phoenix Academy, we're going to be talking to you about that next week in a different study session about some updates that need to happen there. And then, of course, Mayo High School's been on the project plan for a number of years, and that is just about fully designed and ready to be bid. And then Washington Elementary School needs windows, lockers, air conditioning, parking lot, roofs as well. So, don't need you to act on this tonight, because we have this slotted for next week in the board item. We have the attachments kind of laying out the projects and the estimated costs and the estimated summers that they'll get worked on.
Board members, any questions? Okay, I'll ask one. Playgrounds, where do they fit into this?
Thank you for mentioning that. I was going to put those in my prepared remarks, and I forgot. Playground's, just a very small portion of that actually fits within the Long Term Facilities Maintenance Plan, and that's actually the health and safety portion, which is the fall protection. So what goes on the base. The rest of it, as you know, we successfully passed the 2024 Operating Referendum, and we have carved out about $200,000 a year to do the other parts of the playground that don't fit within the health and safety budget. And so this summer, Elton Hills was the first school that was up for that. I believe Washington comes next, and we just, we have a plan that will just keep going from there.
And I remember a few years ago, there was a comprehensive study of all of our facilities that really kind of established a new baseline for where they were. And I assume that's the study that you're updating each year.
Yeah, so that's really, that was a point-in-time study, and so that does drive the kind of the timing of the projects, although we have to move them around based on things that are failing more imminently than what might have been planned in that study. It's about time to redo that and to reassess our capital planning and to maybe modernize too the program that we use to do the planning. So we look forward to probably making that a key initiative.
And I, I think what you said about keeping, not just, well, reorganizing the projects and timing the projects so that the tax levy on our community stays the same. And I, if anybody wants to be directed to it, there is a great chart that appears every time you present this to us, as one of the attachments. And it does show that it stays under a 15% tax rate over thirty years?
Yeah, into 2049 and then 2050, there's a lot of wiggle room left there. Who knows what we'll be faced with at that point. But there would be a lowering of taxes if we don't have other needs at that point.
I have one question.
Dr. Martin.
And it's just a question that is put out there for consideration. As we are faced with lower student, a lower birth rate, which will affect how many students we are able to serve, I ran across the term enrollment and resource optimization as it relates to ideally being able to consider the realities of your enrollment, as well as the investments in your facilities. Well, not yours, but our facilities. And so I'm just curious, is that part of anything that's being currently considered? I know these are, with LTFM, we have to plan based on need, and I might ask you to suggest, well, what buildings we currently have that's part of our inventory, our asset inventory, may not, at some point in the future, due to whatever reason, may not still remain there. But are we beginning a, any discussion regarding that, or, and how might that, or should that be a separate consideration from LTFM?
Superintendent?
Yeah, Dr. Barley, thank you. That is about the best lead-in to next week we could ever have had, because that's precisely the discussion at the study session for next week. Things that, on the whole, with a couple of exceptions, are not eligible to be funded through LTFM, but that are based significantly on our projected enrollment decline, coupled with some aging buildings that we've decided it's not worth upgrading, given that declining enrollment. I think we can see next week, it's certainly a really important discussion next week. I think it's likely to be the beginning rather than the end of a journey, as we are going to need to continually think about the use of space tied to the number of students we're privileged to serve, tied to our bottom line financially. So, yeah, you'll hear a lot about enrollment and program needs next week.
Thank you. Perfect. And just jumping ahead to the next item that will be on your action agenda, one of the things in there we're asking you to commit to is setting aside $6 million for unplanned strategic uses that we need to maybe make some renovations to facilities that don't qualify for LTFM. And so we're asking in that item to set some money aside for those initiatives and those things that come up to, so we can optimize the facilities with our enrollment.
Thank you.
All right, board members, we will revisit this at our special session at the July 22nd Our next item is an action item, the Five-Year Budget Reduction Strategy. The board had reviewed this item under Prep for Action at the June 17th meeting, and Superintendent Pecquell, I believe you have something you want to share with us first?
You know, I think, Chair Nathan, I've already hit the point I was going to make. And so in the effort not to be redundant, I will defer to you, and we'll move forward.
All right. Then I'll read the resolution and ask for motion and second. And if we need any discussion or questions, we can open the floor for that. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve transferring $6.0 million from the unassigned general fund balance into a committed general fund balance for future facilities or technology upgrades, for which no other dedicated funding source exists, and be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the use of up to $3 million of the district's unassigned general fund balance per year until the district's unassigned general fund balance is approximately 8% of total general fund expenditures, and be it further resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 directs the superintendent and administration to develop and present to the RPS School Board budget proposals for the fiscal years 2026, 2027, 2028, 2029, and 2030 that implement reductions required to keep the school district budget in balance. Overapproval.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Do we have any questions or discussion? Dr. Cook?
Yeah, I would like to discuss. I, I think this is a decision that either this board or a future board could easily be looking back on five years from now and wondering, was that the right call? Because there's big implications here for what decisions are going to be available for a deliberative body in 2030 or 2029. And I'm of, I'm of two minds on this, and I've really struggled with the second part of the resolution, the direction to spend $3 million a year from the unassigned fund balance in order to, over the next five years, bring the unassigned fund balance down to the policy-mandated minimum. And on the one hand, the benefit is we're using the resources we have available to their fullest extent for the students that are in the district for the next five years, and sheltering them from any reductions that would result from only spending the amount of revenue that we have for the next, you know, each year. And so for the students in the district the next five years, that is probably the best thing for them. But the cliff that that creates and the decisions that are available five years from now, it's almost like we're setting up that future board, that future administration for almost certainly needing to run another referendum, perhaps looking at a tech, capital projects levy or something else. And barring that, the level of reductions that would be required would be even more severe. So that, that part really concerns me in terms of our long-term planning. The other aspect that, I mean, that's enough, I guess, but the other, the other part is, we're in an environment where revenue for public education is as uncertain, it's always uncertain, that's sort of part of the game, but it is, you know, at the federal level, it's anybody's guess right now. I think, given the forecast at the state level, it would be prudent to assume that there would be delays in reimbursements from the state. And having some cushion, some working capital to work with in our district above and beyond the 8% is, I think, prudent. I'm not really suggesting that we should change our policy. I know that's even been discussed in the past, to have a larger cushion than the 8%. And I don't pretend that an extra $3 million is something that wouldn't have any ramifications, but I'm just, I'm having a really hard time supporting the idea that we're going to intentionally spend down the fund balance to the policy minimum over the next five years. So I'm, I'm ready to support the first and third parts of the resolution. I just, I'm just not ready on the second one. And I don't know that there's any additional information I need. I'm just, I'm just really uncomfortable with making this decision and setting up a future board for what feels like tough circumstance.
Yeah, sure.
I really appreciate that point, Dr. Cook. And I don't mean to suggest, and I know you don't take it, that this resolution would not be a very substantive decision. However, the board's formal approval would happen each of those five years in approving the budget. So these are, these would be my marching orders for the next five years in terms of our broad financial strategy, which is also in the interest of transparency with our community, letting us see this. Certainly, as we learn what is happening with, as you note, the very fluid state and federal funding picture for education, enrollment in RPS, the board would, and certainly I would be in my recommendations to you, be making a decision each year. So I don't mean to minimize this, but you would have the flexibility each year of this process to say, "Thank you for the budget that meets our charge. I think this uses too much fund balance, and I need you to bring me another one, two, or three million in cuts," because that would be the alternative. It would be deeper cuts. These cuts are daunting already, and so I know you know why I'm recommending that we go down to the minimum with fund balance. But you would have, as a board, the opportunity each year in this process to direct me to do something different. But this gives me that longer-term strategy that I do think will be helpful as we navigate the months ahead, years ahead. But I take your point, for sure.
Dr. Martin?
No, and, you know, the, Dr. Cook, I think you have a really valid concern that I think all of us share. And the second part of the resolution does say, approve the use of up to $3.0 million. So, you know, as Dr. Pecquell said, we can still decide each year.
Dr. McClellan? I would agree, and I think the thing that I add to it, where I looked at the slides, is that, where it sold it for me is that on Slide 4, talking about the differences starting in fiscal year '27, if we, if we don't do this, it's even more onerous. And I think if we're balancing those two things together, the short- And I think if we're balancing those two things together, the short term and the long term, I think that the, the up to 3 million gives us a good balance of how to meet both of the needs for all of those populations.
And for me, when I look at the magnitude of the budget reductions that would be needed simply to meet the numbers at the level that they're being projected at now, it's the largest ones I can remember in the 25 years that I've been a part of this district. So to not give the superintendent the flexibility to take some of that from the fund balance, I think, I think would restrict the options we have and make it even more onerous. And there were a number of years where we, we were able to operate well under an 8% balance. We haven't always had this level of fund balance above our policy. It's been prudent financial management and, I think, seriously looking at our expenditures every year that has been able to have us manage this cushion. So I appreciate highlighting the use of up to, and your approach of knowing that we have that longer-term issue in mind when you bring us the budgets every year. Anything else, board members?
If there is no further discussion, all in favor of the resolution, say aye. Aye opposed?
Nay.
The resolution has been approved. Our next action item is our math curriculum purchase. The board reviewed this item under prep for action at the June 17th meeting. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 535 does hereby approve the purchase of the everyday mathematics materials for grades kindergarten through five in the total amount of $489,811.90 in a multi-year order for the 2025, 2026, and 2026, 2027 school years. Move approval. Second. Thank you. There has been a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, say aye. Aye opposed? Resolution has been approved. 9.1, other business, our updated ABCD is in the agenda that you can reference for future agenda meetings for our school board meetings. And the upcoming agenda items are being displayed on the slide and include, at the July 22nd meeting, as I mentioned, we have a special section, a special session at 5:30 where we will take action on the long-term facilities maintenance plan. And then our study session will begin, where we will hear about the facility strategy. We will have a monitoring item on our school board self-evaluation for this past year and our goal development for next year. And then we'll have a closed session for the superintendent evaluation on the superintendent's leadership component. Then at our August 5th meeting, we'll have a graduation rate analysis and overview of the ninth grade on-track initiative, staff development plan and budget review. We'll have a report on our closed session on the superintendent evaluation for the leadership component. Then we'll have action on the girls' hockey co-op, approval of the 2025, 2026 student handbook. And then we'll have an additional closed session on the superintendent evaluation, Part Two, of his leadership component. Any items board members would like to raise for consideration for our future meeting agenda? Hearing none, you heard about our July 22nd meeting at 5:30. Our August 5th meeting actually starts at 4 o'clock and will only run to 6 o'clock because of national night out. Then on August 12th, we have a retreat, and that start time is at 6:00 PM. And on August 19th, we have a regular meeting at 5:30 PM. And hearing no additional business, this meeting is adjourned. Oh, no, I am sorry, we are not adjourned. We have a closed session. Our next item on the agenda is a closed session. The next item is a closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13 D05 subdivision 3B, which allows the board to go into closed session pursuant to labor negotiation strategy. The closed session will be convened immediately following passage of the motion in the Edison Building Main Floor Conference Room. Pursuant to the law I have cited, will someone make a motion to go into closed session? Someone?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to go into closed session. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? The board moves into closed session at 7:26 PM.
The board has returned to the regular meeting at 8:20 PM. Quick Marvin, will you please read the list of people present in the closed session?
Those present were board members Kathy Nathan, Julie Workman, Stephanie Whitehorn, Karen McLaughlin, Don Barlow, Justin Cook, and Jeanne Marvin, HR Director Carl Baccan, Chief Administrative Officer John Carlson, and Superintendent Kent Pecel.
And hearing no other business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:21 PM.